So what are we doing here? We are here seeking equal footing. We are seeking fairness and we are seeking a level playing field. And to get a better understanding of what that means, we need to look back. And let me preface that some of my numbers will be different than some of the superintendent's numbers. My information stops at 2020. He has the magic key. Total funding. In the last seven years, our public school has received well over half a billion dollars in revenue. Five hundred and eighty-three million dollars to be exact. Of that, one hundred and thirty-two million dollars has been generated through local taxes, local sales tax, ad valorem tax. I looked at the audits and was able to confirm that our county schools have been experiencing a steady and consistent uptick in revenue. This is the last fiscal year audit that was on the website, 2020. So this is the most recent audit and it shows that Ataga County received ninety million dollars last year. That's eleven million more than it received in 2014. What makes this jump in funding even more dramatic is that our county school enrollment has dropped a thousand students since 2010. This means that our schools are receiving much more money per pupil today than seven years ago, and that is a great thing. Looking back at the side, you will also see that the county schools received nineteen million dollars. It's a little bit fuzzy. Nineteen million dollars from local taxes in 2020, a strong majority of which was generated within the city limits. That's part of the countywide one cent education tax as well as ad valorem tax in the city. However, this is a big one. Ivy Classical will not receive a single dollar from these local taxes, which is really why, the real reason we stand before you today. We are the least funded school in Ataga County. We are, due to the disparity in how local funds are dispersed, we receive much less per pupil than the remainder of all other county schools. As you can see here, Ivy will only receive seventy-seven hundred dollars per student while all other public schools receive nine thousand nine hundred and fourteen. Let that sink in. Ivy Classical Academy will receive two thousand dollars less per pupil to educate our same children. We are not asking the city for an unfair advantage. We're not asking the city to give us a boost out of the gates or to buy us a new facility at High Point. We are simply asking for the city to treat Ivy Classical in an equal manner, providing constituents who choose Ivy with a fair share of local funds on a per pupil basis. Ataga County has no legal obligation to share local tax. But the city of Prattville, the largest contributor to local school taxes, has a chance to make things fair for all students. Remember, Ivy Classical is a public school serving all students of Ataga County. Why should our students, our families, your constituents be kept at a disadvantage regarding access to their local education funds? Using 2020 numbers, each student in Ataga County received two thousand in local funding, two thousand dollars. If Ivy Classical Academy received an equitable per pupil split of local taxes, our local funding would be about 1.33 million. It would be enough to satisfy the bond to cover the purchase and renovation of High Point. It will be enough to cover the purchase or construction of any new facility within the city limits. So we sincerely ask that the city consider putting Ivy Classical Academy on fair and equal per pupil basis so that all public school students in our county are funded fairly. So why should Prattville embrace Ivy Classical? We are the solution. If overcrowding is an issue, we can help alleviate the pressure across all grades and from all schools. If a new facility is needed, Ivy Classical is that new facility and we will be able to provide the students of Ataga County at significant savings compared to traditional school construction costs. Constituents have clearly shown that school choice is wanted. Ivy is the only approved school choice. We have a different curriculum. Prattville will have the first public school in Alabama to offer a tuition-free classical Increased enrollment. Not all students in Ataga County are in the public school system. Ivy's curriculum will attract homeschool and private school students to return to the public education system. Military. We have been in communication with Maxwell Air Force Base and key personnel and the reception has been extremely positive. Military families are excited about this opportunity and we believe Ivy will be one of the driving forces for a resurgence in military families bringing their children to Prattville, reversing a negative trend which is not currently being addressed. In closing, it is the responsibility of elected officials to ensure that all constituents are heard and treated fairly. So I urge each of you on the city council to look at the facts and hear the voices of the parents and children who want school choice, who need school choice, and take the steps necessary to ensure that their voices are given fair and equal representation and equal access to our local education taxes. Now that's the end of the written portion, but I want to let those words resonate with you for a minute because Superintendent, when he was asked, "What are you asking for?" And he said, "I want equitable treatment. I don't want any one school to have disproportionate amount of funds." That's what we want. We're all on the same page. We are all on the same page. Any questions?
Does any council have any questions?
Yes, sir. You said that you did not ask for 22.8 million to the city council?
Ask and mention are two different words. I did not ask. I mentioned it. We talked about the total production cost.
Okay. Does any other constituent have any questions?
And also, our introduction to you a couple of years ago, we had a council meeting and I guess maybe a couple of weeks prior to that council meeting, you know, it was kind of respectful, you know, to bring from the back the council chairman accusing the developer of being a liar, grossed dice, you know, just started at the time. And now, people, our two years, booed, and you were against that property. Now, you want to generate this property. Was that part of the project at all?
No, sir, not at all. My interest is in High Point and High Point alone.
Not the property behind it, no fields, nothing?
Well, if fields were given to us, absolutely. What school wouldn't want?
The developer's.
That is correct. If fields are donated to the school, why would that be a bad thing?
They'd be donated by?
What's that?
Who would donate fields?
The developer behind the apartments.
The master or anything?
We've had discussions with him, absolutely.
So 22.8 would not ask?
There was no ask for 22.8 million dollars. We discussed the total project cost and as soon as that number left my mouth, our bond advisor went into what that would look like on an annual basis. No school develops a property. For example, Redland Middle School, they didn't ask their board of education for thirty million dollars. They asked for a bond. Ataugaville, Auburn High School, Thompson High School, they weren't built cash out of pocket. It was built on a bond. Superintendent Tidmore here will tell you, he would love a bond to build new facilities. You don't go cash out of pocket, Marcus. You don't do that.
Oh.
Okay, good.
Do you understand that, sir?
Good. So there is a difference between having a conversation about a project and making a request for the full amount. We requested, we didn't request, but we discussed what a bond payment would be, which is 1.17 million dollars. I don't mind saying it. And if we had equal access to our local funding, we wouldn't be standing here because it would already been in the works, pending one mile, which is a big deal.
Does any other council have any questions? Here we go. Frank, are there any, are you aware of any other charter schools in our state that were funded, without, you know, county or city or any corporate sponsorship, as far as facilities go? Also, as far as facilities go, are there any others you're considering licensing for any, or are they all around the same class?
So the first part of the question, are there any charter schools in the state of Alabama that? So there are plenty that are doing well and some that aren't. And the ones that are doing well have financial backing for what I would consider non-governmental entities. For example, Breakthrough Academy is partnering with Marion, the Marion Military Institute. You know, so it's advanced. It was Magic City Acceptance Academy, they're partnered with the Magic City Foundation. Dr. Tommy Weiss, the former superintendent in the state, now runs I-3 Academy up in Birmingham. And so, you know, the funding mechanism for charter schools, for startup charter schools is broken. Academically, we can sustain ourselves, but without facilities. And that's really, the way the law was written is Ataga County, we're supposed to work with them for vacant, unused school facilities. There are not. There are no vacant facilities. So without supplemental support through local, I mean, if it was equitable share of local funding, we have no issues. But they're not legally obligated to give us dollar one. And so the second question, if you can repeat it.
Okay, so another question. I'm going to give a motivation and I think I'm going to Dr. Weiss's facility in Birmingham to my wife and Dr. Davis and, you know, a lot of funding for that facility, which they're not getting in Woodlawn, whereas they're doing very well. They need to draw money from the city of Woodlawn or Jefferson County. The other question was, 22.8 for the facility at High Point. Are there other facilities or not the built facilities throughout the city or county that would come in less? And if they are, where's that off our figure? And what's the amount of time on the payment on this bond?
Well, we're not requesting a bond. We're requesting local funding. So I mean, that would be, we would be able to take on the bond as an entity ourselves. So it would not, the city would not have to validate a bond, nor would you with public housing. So it's two different apples. If the city wants to discuss a bond issue, we can discuss that all day long. I mean, we're very, very flexible. We just want a roof over our heads, but there is no roof more cost effective than High Point. Hundred dollars a square foot for a campus that will, it's the most beautiful charter school campus in America. It will be talked about for hundreds of years to come. That's how impactful that facility is. And so we're going to keep pushing, we're going to keep dreaming big, but if it cannot happen, we can do tilt-up construction somewhere else. You know, we can do modular tech campuses while we continue the good fight for High Point. So we're open to all things, you know, very flexible in that regard.
So you, my friend's not working. So you just said that you're not requesting a bond, you're requesting local funding, since you guys handle the bond on your own, essentially still with the property money they don't have, correct?
Correct. I mean, in an indirect fashion. So right now, Ataga County schools have a one cent countywide sales tax. That is one cent in the city and one cent out the city specifically for them. We know that generates about 6.8 million dollars a year. The ad valorem tax within the city, Daniel, I don't know the answer, but let's call it five million, four million. So let's just say that there's 10 million in local tax going to Ataga County students. What we're asking the city to do today is of the additional funds that you're willing to disperse to education, bring up the level playing field. We are a public school. We're teaching the same kids from our neighbors, our friends, our families. We're the same boat of people. So we're asking you to say, before we give Ataga any additional money, so we're not taking anything away from them. It's revenue neutral. But before you give them additional money, bring us up to the same playing field. That's what we're asking for. We're looking for equitable distribution of city-generated local education tax dollars. I hope that made sense.
Does any other council have any questions?
Another question. Why should the decision have to pay on 22.8 million, city bond for these charter schools? This is tax pay, so why would we pay 20 million dollars?
It's a very good question. You know, I was not here when that decision was made. The option, the other alternate is to leave it sitting empty. It's not going to self-fill. It won't. It would have already done so. If a shopping center sits empty for two years, it will sit empty for 20. And so I can't speak to the past. I can just tell you right now, Ataga County, sorry, from a school construction cost, there's nothing cheaper. A hundred dollars a square foot versus 300. So it's making, what's the saying, making lemonade out of lemons? Would that apply here?
Well, why should we as a government body pay this? We have all the skin and game, you know?
That's a very good question.
We're all able to fish.
Yep.
And I've got tons of emails and calls from my constituents, coworkers in the school system that are very concerned about this. So we have all the skin and game, we're able to fish. Why should we, you live, you not, you allow raising money and funds for this?
Well, you're not doing it for me. You're doing it for 800 students, 500 families, and growing. Those are your constituents too.
But how many of those could be from Elmore, Ataga, Chilton, that same block?
So, again, going back to, Ataga County is our priority enrollment zone, and I'm just going to use a round number, 500. If we have 500 seats and 500 students from Ataga County apply, they all get in. If there's 501, all of their names go in a hat and their 500 are drawn out. And the only event in which an Elmore student or a Chilton student or any other, let's just call them non-Ataga students, the only event in which they can enroll at Ivy Classical is if we do not fill capacity for Ataga County students first. And we cannot open it up to specific counties afterwards. If we do not fill capacity for Ataga County, it's open to the entire state.
What is the capacity of Ataga?
The full capacity.
Say, what's the capacity? What's the estimate?
So we're approved for 642 students.
First year.
First year. And we've got 800 pre-enrolled. So I would say that the likelihood that they're all Ataga County students is 100%. And they're not just going to come from the city of Prattville, I got to make that clear. They're going to come from Ataugaville. They're going to come from Billingsley. They're going to come from Marbury. They're going to come from all across the county. Prattville is just the most appropriate seat for the facility. It's ease of access for everybody.
Another question. How do we arrive at 22.8 million figure for acquisition and renovation, especially since we don't know the figure for this?
Well, we're not discussing, we're talking about 230,000 square feet. And what we did is we looked at the acquisition price. So in discussions with Ball Ventures, we have a PSA that we can affect. So we take the acquisition price and we've had multiple engineers and contractors and they all arrived at a range between 68 and 72 dollars a square foot to finish out that space. It's not finished out right now. I don't know if you've ever been in, but it's concrete floors, no restrooms, no wiring. So it's a raw shell, is the only way I can describe it. And so the cost to finish that, finish the space out is no different than any other scenario. It's the acquisition of what's already there that is giving us, that makes this so cost effective.
Well, what if the bill doesn't pass, what's the issue then? And we've got to build Ataga County, the city or whatever. Will additional ask for, will money be, yeah, will more money be mentioned to the city council?
No, if we have equitable, if we have equitable share of local city funding, we won't, there will be no other ask. We're a nimble, nimble organization. We have, we've gone through it. We've got a former CFO of a county school board is our financial consultant. Our budgets are sound. They've been reviewed. And the only thing missing, because it's missing in Alabama's law, is the facilities. Startup charter schools are not protected on local funding. We're not giving, we're not giving facility assistance. And that's why it does require somebody with immense connections like Dr. Weiss or organizational support like the Marion Military Institute or the Magic City AIDS Foundation. These people have a lot of money. And so what we're asking for is the city, we're not, think about this, we're not taking a dollar away from Ataga County that they don't have today. We're just asking the city now that this additional funds just raise the bar for us and then equitable distribution. It's fair and it's what Superintendent requested, equitable distribution, fair distribution. We're all on the same page. And it's fair for the 800 students that choose Ivy Classical and it's fair for the 9,000 that don't. It's fair across the board, period.
Why don't we, you're an entity, Ataga County, go ahead and say whatever. What position you want to be in, what Ataga County, basically, what you say we, if you need to share, and establish with this?
Again, it's your constituents. It's the 800 students. You're not giving me money. They have school choice. They have school choice. So if they choose to enroll in Ivy Classical, they're entitled to their state and federal funds. They're not entitled to their local tax funds. That's where it's broken. So we're not asking for anything unfair. Ataga County's been around for a very long time and they will be. We're going to have plenty of partnerships, plenty of opportunities to raise the bar together. But right now, we are the least funded. We are the ones that are looking at equity in terms of local funding. So we're...
By the way, I'd like to ask you a question.
Well, I also want to talk to you about, you know, well, we'll talk about the off-the-record football. You know, a lot of people have made mention that we're getting a stadium. I'd like to know what the capacity of that is. But, you know, the reality is, we're going to have a different slate of sports and this is probably better addressed at Ivy Classical specific, but there are ways that the city and county school systems can work together to where our students can play sports in the county and vice versa. So there will be shared resources. We've had conversations with people that, when we haven't addressed at High Point, they're talking about a horticultural grant where we can build a world-class greenhouse. We're not going to keep that to ourselves. We're going to share that with everybody in the county and everybody in the river region. Same thing. I mean, Superintendent Tidmore mentioned STEM. These are things we're interested in as well. You know, classical curriculum is thousands of years old, but STEM is very much needed. And so if there's a way for us to partner, we can share those resources. The only request we have is we don't have a roof because the local funding component is broken and you have a very unique opportunity to tell your constituents to choose Ivy, "We're going to fund you on an equitable basis, on a per pupil basis, and we're going to get this done." We're not asking for any preferential treatment.
Well, how many teaching units do you expect, 600 plus students?
So our students. To take away from Ataga County? I mean, if we have full enrollment, it's going to be 642 students, but at the end of the day, it's not a one-for-one.
But I'm saying as far as teaching units?
Well, you know, K through three, it's slated at 16, I think is the exact number. It's 18 students per teacher unit and, you know, it's, so that there's different mechanisms. We're K through six, how many teaching units? I think at pre-enrollment, we're at 40. But we've got a much lower student-to-teacher ratio. So we have more, we have more teachers to teach the same students that, you know, Dr. Tidmore, I know the mayor asked you what your student-to-teacher ratio is. I think online it says 18 to 1. I think, but that number is easily misconstrued. I'll say the same thing about us. On paper, we're 12 to 1, but they count what I would say classroom teachers plus aides and things of that nature. So that's not the true figure for us, it's not the true figure for them. But in terms of teacher units, I can assure you this, for every displaced teacher in Ataga County, there will be more at Ivy because we're going to have a lower, it's part of the classical education. It's hands-on, it's very rigorous, there's, you know, it's just, it's one of the things that we're very adamant about. And so all of our money that we have from the state and foundational level, so, you know, we've had discussions with David Lewis as well at YMCA because he's sitting half empty Monday through Friday, nine to five. We're not going to deploy assets for gymnasiums and things like that if we can have a valuable community partnership that works both ways. Academics are what need help. Academics and curriculum are what need help and we're bringing that. And it's not, and we're going to have resources, professional development, teacher development, how to be a better teacher, that's part of our classical curriculum. It's going to be open to every public school teacher in the river region, Ataga County as well. So that's where we're up to.
Will Ray Ray and Pooey and kids in my district have an opportunity to get in?
Statistically, the exact same odds. And again, if one more student applies, then we have capacity. It's gone to a third-party administrator. We're not the ones pulling the names out of the hat, saying, "Oh, we prefer them or them." It's a third, it will be through the Alabama Charter Commission.
That's who?
Well, whoever they choose. Yeah, it's going to be a third, and it will, from what I understand, there is a component where it may even be done live, livestreamed. So it's becoming like the NFL Draft. But to really address your concerns, absolutely. And I will tell you that students from all parts of Ataga County that are not in good situations right now, they will thrive at Ivy Classical Academy. If they are awarded a seat through the lottery, they will thrive. This is an education for us all, not just for the select few. That is a comment that's been echoed around the internet and it is false. It is absolutely false.
Any other questions?
Are you able to describe for everybody here, the facilities and how you're looking at the bar?
Absolutely. I don't know if everybody's driven up to High Point, but it's sitting empty. It's sitting empty, but it is absolutely bucolic. The landscaping is established. It's peaceful, it's serene, it's safe. Floor-to-ceiling glass in every single classroom. Ample parking. Ample throughfare at the back of Lowe's. You know, we will do comprehensive traffic studies, but it's going to have very minimal impact. When our students show up, it's before work hours. When our students are picked up, it's before retail hours. It's a win. It's a win to be able to do something of this magnitude on 30 cents on the dollar. And all these people online are saying, "We should have an Auburn High," we should have these big, massive mega schools, as I would call them, which are, it's just not very good use of money. We can have it. And we can have it for cheaper than Redland Middle School in Elmore County. They're on, I think the official budget was like 26.8 million for a hundred and some odd thousand dollar square foot school. We're talking about 4 million less for twice the square footage. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And again, I know there's a lot of bad blood with High Point and everything that's gone on, but this is a chance to put it to bed for good. Because if we are given those local funding, or it's equitable local funding, we are here to stay.
Is the city?
Oh, sorry.
That was great.
Thank you, thank you. If you drive up to High Point, you've got J.C. Penney on one end and Belk on the other and you've got vacant space in the middle. It's actually six buildings. There's space that is affixed to J.C. Penney that is not J.C. Penney. Most of them are closed. And then you've got a two-story vacant building and three other single-story buildings as you face off towards Belk. And so all told, we are talking about acquiring 230,000 square feet and converting it into a world-class school campus. So we're not talking about anything on the public's level, it's all above. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And I would, I would like to say something. We explored various options four years ago and what the final thing that we found is that we're the lowest-funded school system in the state. I think we were 137 out of 137 four or five years ago. So everybody up here, I believe, graduated from Prattville. We love Prattville, we love the Ataga County schools. We just want to make things better for our community. We've got the issue, we've got the military at Maxwell Air Force Base. I would say six years ago, that commander was laying down the foundation, saying that we have a problem bringing families to the community. To me, that was a big red flag. The community from Maxwell, this was the place to come to. This is where we thrive, was our education. And education is not what it was and we're not bringing in the students here. We've got an issue and funding is the issue and we want to help. We want this and we brought this to the community and we want to open up the discussion. So I want to thank everyone for coming and we've got a great opportunity to help the Ataga County Board of Education and we've got an opportunity maybe for school choice. So I just want to say, is there any council that would like to say anything before we close this court session? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to say, first of all, I would like to give a heartfelt thank you to this community who wants to come together and show us support for our school system tonight. It's important to note that as an educator and coach for our children, I'm first to say that our full support and opportunity to elevate gives children the means of success. Ataga County Board of Education is one of the least-run school systems in the state. There's always been a problem, you can both do the least and that's all okay. I strongly feel it is time for elected officials in the city council, Prattville, Ataga County Commission, and the county board of education to stand together for our kids. Our kids, we need to make the system better. Teachers, who more often than not... Teachers, who more often than not use their personal funds to make sure that no child is left behind, have all the tools the school board is financing and managing to provide. The teachers and staff of the Ataga County Board of Education need to deserve more recognition for the self-dedication job children. If there's going to be allocation of funds for education and public funds, then there must be a more comprehensive plan for the parent school system. This is not an insult to private schools or charter schools. I'm not from education in all forms, but this use of city funds to fund a new charter school while our parent school system is struggling is not something that I can support right now. I applaud those of you who want to bring charter schools... I applaud those of you who want to bring charter schools to this area, but we cannot further damage the public school system by volunteering funds. They need to offer our children an education of the same caliber. As Mr. Franklin said, investment in knowledge pays for business interests. If we as the city council want to make an investment in education, let's start with our parent school system.
Yes, thank you. You know, it's, education is very, very important, and military is very, very important. And they are intertwined with our community. And part of that is their education, portioned as well, through our churches, through our athletes, so-so many different things. And, you know, we have so many great things going on in this community now. And a lot of, because a lot of the people that are here, they are educated. And I agree with Mr. Jackson. You know, to me, I think it's tragic, tragesty when our educators have to take one year out of their pockets. And I think I saw the report that like ninety-five percent across the nation have to spend somewhere between five and six hundred dollars a year out of their own pockets for their classrooms. I think that is something that should be looked into, something that we all can handle to see in any way we can handle all this. But, you know, as elected officials for the city of private, we have been given the task to watch and work on and implement that. And over the years, there has been a lot of mistrust, a lot of mistrust between the city, the county, county commissioners, and the board of ed. And this is not the first time that we've been something similar to this. After all this started coming around, I started doing research, had several documents right here for me. And we're going to be working together to try to get these documents out so that the citizens can really see that. And it reveals fields and lays out history. And we all know about history being itself. Now, it's possible what's going on here today is that just history's come back around. Technology's a lot more easily available for all of us. Technology is taking so, more and more people can realize what's going on. But I think when these documents are really brought out there, I think we're going to see that we need to come together as a community. It needs to be the board of ed. It needs to be the county commission. It needs to be the city. But now, one thing, again, we are elected officials for the corporate limits. And I agree for many years about partners of private. Because I've counted for small businesses. I've also been here on the west side of private and the east side, and it's so-so important when people still want to come here a lot. Now, because of investments, thank goodness, my son, the daughter, and the grandkids, they don't have to go to locations they did buy. And we so deeply thank them all here in our community because of some of the investors. But in one of these reports that I found, there was a report from the city education evaluation committee. And this is one that we'll be getting out there. But in the closing comments of it, have it down here, failure of elected bodies, the city council, county commission, and the board of ed to address the education lead of our community will ultimately diminish the quality of life. And clothing quote here, I'm from Land Wells, is, the thing about education is expensive and triad ignorance, also J.M.K. You know, we do have an opportunity here today, the council, the community sides to come together. And it ought to be a lot more positive than what it is. And social media, it's been one of the driving forces, it would be so named, and it should not. It ought to be so positive, because right now, we have to make some things really offering improved value. Education system on here to the best top that they can, and I think they're excellent for where they are. Do they need funding? Yes. The one penny that has been discussed, the one reason why we're in the board session, personally, I think I'll be a lot of that, of course. If the community side didn't offer it. And last week, our last council meeting, infrastructure, I think we all know how important it is. How many people showed up for that? I think I said about four. Yeah, I did three or four, okay. They showed up for that. I had planned to say about a year today, but I hope that when we come back, that council meeting, but parks and rest, because it is also very, very important. A little bit of history and time, after I first became mayor here, we didn't have two quarters together. I had a group of unofficial financial advisors come to me and tell me that we got to cut, and we don't have to have parks and rest. If you cut them out, I said, you know how idiotic that really is? Is that because if I do that, I don't have the money to give that plus more to a police officer, you can have more issues. Sports is so much more, you know, Friday night lights down here, it's as much a social event as it is the football game itself. So there are so many things that bring the community together. But I think the one penny, if it is decided on by the community, elected bodies up here, infrastructure, education, parks and rest, and public facilities. And when I say that, I mean something like the library, the home, the creative arts. So we do have an opportunity here. Y'all should be a lot more positive than what it is today, because we are, this community is a lot better than what I've seen in social media. So, Mr. President, the city council, and citizens out here, I hope you've all come together for this. I think another committee needs to pull together, because we need to pull together instead of wrecking each other apart. Thank you.
You have to know the candidates. Councilor James.
Yes, just real quick, I just, I think at the end, we all kind of want the same thing, just trying to get there. Just trying to figure out how we're going to get there. Because at the end of the day, I think we all care about the kids. It's all about the kids. And, you know, I've been here in the council, I've spoken to many constituents from every different angle here. And I know they all have the same passion, is making sure our kids get a good education. And they have a fair opportunity when they get out of school. I also agree, we need to come together, county board education, and the city to make this happen. I think, from the sound of it, it's been needed for a long time. And I hope this is going to go a long way into making some of that happen. So I appreciate it.
Councilor Wood. Councilor Strick. Councilor Moon. This is the blue board session. Now, I want to move into our public here. Madam Clark, will you call the board?
Councilor Strickland.
Here.
Councilor Jackson.
Here.
Councilor Chambers.
Here.
Councilor Charles.
Here.
Councilor Bortek.
Here.
Councilor Strick.
Here.
Councilor Moon.
Declared everyone present, I call upon the lady, hearing the word, order to move along. To reason and property located in Old Farm Lane at Rocky Mountain Road, north of High Point Town Center, from FAR to our great single-family residence. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Here none. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Here none, I declare the public hearing closed. Now, we'll move into our break room here. Your abiding stance for our pleading agents in our relocation, Councilor Jackson will begin her relocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, in the physical and the spiritual.
For all you've done for us on this day, we pray for our nation, our state, and our county, our city. We pray for your family and household as we do here, Lord. I ask that you continue to give us wisdom and guidance. Help us, Lord, to go about your business and do the right thing, right thing by our constituents who relate to us, be leaders, and do the right thing by the Lord at all times, for all beings. And I just pray that you continue to give us the strength and help us, Lord, as a community, to continue to come together and not be so divided at all times. We just come together and work together for the comfortability in our community. Please say your prayer.
Madam Clerk, would you be able to...
Counselor Strickland, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Starrns, Counselor Borde, Counselor Strickland, Counselor Moon.
To declare the board of members of the House of Representatives, the character of trade for long was respected, creating a honor for any individuals. At this time, the Chair will adjutant motion for the approved and scheduled work session in City Council Committee held on April 6th, 2021.
Is that it?
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor for adopting the minutes, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the minutes are adopted. At this time, we welcome any comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. I repeat, we welcome any comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Hearing none.
All in favor.
Good afternoon. When we say tonight...
If you would say your name.
My name is Air White II. I live at 621 West Ford Street.
Thank you, sir. We can't hear you.
Yes. When we talk about tonight's agenda, I want to talk about the work session that was part of tonight's agenda.
Sir, you have given an opportunity at the end of this council meeting.
So you will give everybody an opportunity? Because I know in the past, I've been to the meetings, and at the end wasn't an opportunity. So I just want...
Yes, sir.
So tonight, you will give an opportunity?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'll hold you to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. Mr. President, have a look.
If I might add, in the interest of time, I would say I'm important to the labor meeting for both of you parties. Thank you.
Yes. At this time, we'll move into the report from council special committee. Counselor Strickland. Counselor Jackson.
How's that?
Counselor Chambers.
Yes.
Counselor Borde.
Yes.
Counselor Strickland.
Yes, sir.
Now, we had a finance committee bill on April 9th, today, A.M. We discussed the main screen out panel, other works for economic progress election update, American Legion contract, one cent sales at sunset, and various projects for the city. Mr. Oakley, give the finance report.
Yes, sir. First page in your packet is the general fund revenue report, and it shows that we have received $25,618,177 for the fiscal year to date, and this is up 14.49% when compared to the same period in the prior year. Next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we were up 11.04% for the month when compared to the previous March. Next three pages show the general fund expenses broken down by departments, and we are 50% of the way through the fiscal year on the expenditure side, and have spent 53.06% of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund. Next page is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. The wastewater fund generated a net income from operations of $298,655 for March. Operating expenses are coming in around 35%, with overall expenses at 43.6% for the first half of the year. Next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. The sanitation fund reported a net loss of $14,473 for March, and this was due in large part to two debt payments hitting during the month, as opposed to just one. Operating expenses are over budget at 54.5%, while overall expenses are under budget at 40%. Next page is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. The judicial fund reported a net loss of $74,548 for March, and this was due to the quarterly Metro Jail payment of roughly $155,000 that was made during the month. Overall expenses are coming in right at budget at 50.6%. Next three statements in your packet are only presented quarterly, and they comprise the gas tax fund, capital projects fund, the group health fund income statements. The gas tax revenues are coming in right in line with budget at 41.9%, and expenses during this quarter were related to some wrap-up of the FY 2020 pavement project. Next page is the capital projects fund income statement. The city has spent approximately $2.35 million on projects during the first half of the fiscal year. Project expenses during this quarter relate primarily to the MLK and Upper Kingston resurfacing project, the Matt Gray Park 2.0 project, Station 4 construction, and the Washington Street drainage project. Next page is the group health fund income statement. The group health fund has reported a cumulative net income to date of $192,802 for the fiscal year. All general fund supplements that have been made during the year have been paid back to this point. Next page is the bank balances report. The total of all bank balances citywide was $33,875,813 at the end of March. The last page in your packets, accounts payable on debt balances report. The total outstanding APN debt balance citywide at the end of March was $52,446,335, while the city's non-enterprise fund debt was $18,964,837.
Is there any question from the council? Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to create the consent agenda on the bottom half. Resolution number one, to declare various leave laws to be a public nuisance order, the amendment and set a public hearing for Title 11 and Chapter 6 and 7 of the Code of Alabama, 1975 as amended. Resolution number two, to set a public hearing toward the end of the City of Prattville code organisms, Chapter 38, License, Taxation, and Municipal Business Regulation, Article 5, Business License and Taxes, including the License of Taxation Code for Mobile Food and Dinner. Resolution number three, to reschedule the public hearing date to rezone or prezone certain properties from May 4, 2021 to May 18, 2021 due to publication requirements. The Chair will entertain to place the items on the consent agenda. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of placing these resolutions on the consent agenda, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign. We now have consent agenda for us. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. We have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on any item of consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor for adopting the consent agenda, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the consent agenda is adopted. We will now move into our regular agenda. Or, as we move on, to rezone profitably located Old Farm Lane and Rocky Mountain Road, North High Point Town Center from Far to our precinct or hand to residential. This was held on March 16, 2021. Is there any discussion on this orders? Hearing none. All in favor for this orders, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the ordinance is adopted. Or, as we move on, to exempt certain covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the third full weekend of July 2021, as authorized by Section 40-23-210 through Section 40-23-213, Code of Alabama, 1975 as amended, generally referred to as the PACT to school sales tax holiday legislation. Counselor Moon, you can introduce this order.
Yes, sir. Being ordained by the City Council, the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, in conformity with provisions of Section 40, 23, 210 through 40, 23, 213, Code of Alabama, 1975 as amended, providing for estate sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama extends covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at 12:01 a.m. on the third Friday, July 2021, to July 16, 2021, and ending at 12:00 midnight the following Sunday, July 18, 2021. This ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by Section 40, 23, 210 through 40, 23, 213, Code of Alabama, 1975 as amended, except that the time period shall only be as specified in Section 1 above, and not for all years thereafter. The City Council is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and to forward said certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. This ordinance shall be effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. I point the order, the council rules must be suspended in order for the time being considered. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, would you conduct the roll call.
Counselor Strickland.
Aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Aye.
Counselor Chambers.
Aye.
Counselor Starrns.
Yea.
Counselor Borde.
Yea.
Counselor Strickland.
Aye.
Counselor Moon.
Yea.
The rules are suspended. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. All in favor for this ordinance, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the ordinance is adopted. Or, as we move on, to adopt regulations for small cell technology facilities in the City of Prattville, Alabama. Counselor Chambers, you can introduce this ordinance.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville, Alabama seeks to facilitate the availability of reliable personal wireless services for citizens and the public in favor of the replacement of small cell technology facilities and associated structures along the right way on and on private properties in the city, whereas pursuant to Alabama Code 11, National Code 1, Municipal Corporations may adopt resolutions or ordinances to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote prosperity, improve the welfare, order, comfort, and convenience of the inhabitants of the municipality. And whereas the installation, expansion, maintenance of small cell technology facilities and associated structures on or along the right way and on private properties might have significant impact on, one, the aesthetic values and character of the city, two, safe use and passage on or along the right way by the public, and, three, properties and property values in the city in areas where such structures are placed. And whereas the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, regulations promulgated with respect to the Act of the Federation Communications Commission, authorized local governments to enact reasonable regulations for the permission, placement, expansion, and maintenance of small cell technology facilities and associated structures. And whereas, as provided in this ordinance as permitted by federal and state law, the city seeks to encourage or feasible allocation of small cell technology facilities on existing poles and other structures as opposed to installation of new structures. And whereas, above noted, allocation and other provisions of this ordinance are intended to be consistent with the Act and its associated regulations. And whereas, adoption of the regulations, procedures, and requirements in this ordinance will permit applicants and providers to enhance the provision of personal wireless service and protect the public welfare, health, safety, and interest of the city's citizens, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 58, Telecommunications, is hereby amended as follows.
Anywhere you have a... None, just a moment. So, Mr. President. All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a second. I look here all night. I point the order, council rules must be suspended in order for this item to be considered tonight. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. Madam Clerk, would you conduct the roll call.
Counselor Strickland.
Aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Aye.
Counselor Chambers.
Aye.
Counselor Starrns.
Yea.
Counselor Borde.
Yea.
Counselor Strickland.
Aye.
Counselor Moon.
Yea.
The rules are suspended. Is there any discussion on the rules? Hearing none. All in favor for this ordinance, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the ordinance is adopted. Or, as we move on, to extend a temporary moratorium on permits and approvals for multifamily apartment developments. Counselor Borde, you can introduce this order.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville adopted ordinance number 2020, Page 28, December 15, 2020, establishing a temporary moratorium on issuance of building permits for multifamily or apartment developments. And whereas, the temporary moratorium is set to expire April 30, 2021. And whereas, the Prattville Planning Commission adopted Project Prattville 2040, the updated comprehensive plan at their April 15, 2021 meeting. And whereas, the Prattville Planning Commission is in the process of rewriting the subject ordinance. And whereas, the temporary moratorium needs to be extended until the subject requirements are updated and adopted by the council. Now therefore, being outdated by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that in order to protect the public health and safety and welfare is in the best interest of the city, to extend the temporary moratorium on issuance of building permits or other approval for any multifamily or apartment development consisting of three or more building units. Being further outdated, the extended moratorium shall continue to be December 31, 2021, unless terminated or extended by action of the City Council. Provided that multifamily developments that have received an approved building permit prior to the effective date of ordinance number 2020-28 may proceed as a valid alternative to the permit applicable rules and regulations. Also, this moratorium is not applied to changes in something or to permits for renewable repairs that does not match the current number of bedrooms or units, or expand the current size of the development. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. I point the order, council rules must be suspended before the time being considered. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Seven.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. Madam Clerk, would you conduct the roll call.
Counselor Strickland.
Aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Aye.
Counselor Chambers.
Aye.
Counselor Starrns.
Yea.
Counselor Borde.
Yea.
Counselor Strickland.
Aye.
Counselor Moon.
The rules are suspended. Is there any special missle rules? Hearing none. All in favor for this rule, raise your right hand. Any opposition, raise your right hand. We have a six one. All, the ordinance is adopted. Resolution number five, to release funds for the purchase of one 2021 Ram 2500 crew cab, four by four truck, expected T191 from Stuygers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, for the Urban Management Division and Department, cost not to exceed $29,859. Counselor Moon, you can introduce this order.
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one 2021 Ram 2500 crew cab, four by four truck, in the Public Works Urban Management Division. And whereas, said truck is available per state bid number T191 from Stuygers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, at a cost not to exceed $29,859. And whereas, this is a budgeted expense for the Public Works Urban Management Division. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that funds in an amount not to exceed $29,859 for the purchase of said truck, are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stuygers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. And said funds are approved and appropriated for fiscal year 2021, budget line item of Urban Management Capital Area. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor for this resolution, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. Resolution number six, to release funds for the purchase of a Q's M-plus lateral inspection system from Q's Incorporated for the wastewater division, and net cost not to exceed $11,151. Counselor Strickland, would you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for a Q's M-plus lateral inspection system in the Public Works Wastewater Division. And whereas, said inspection system is available for Q's Incorporated, and it costs not to exceed $11,151. And whereas, this is a budgeted expense from the Public Works Wastewater Division. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that funds in an amount not to exceed $11,151 for the purchase of said Q's M-plus lateral inspection system, are hereby authorized and approved and paid to Q's Incorporated. And said funds are approved and appropriated for FY 2021, budget line item, wastewater and across on Capital Area. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor for this one, resolution, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. Resolution number seven, to release funds for the purchase of one 2021 Ram 2500 crew cab, four by four truck, expected T191 from Stuygers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, for the wastewater division, and net cost not to exceed $29,859. Counselor Strickland, would you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one 2021 Ram 2500 crew cab, four by four truck, in the Public Works Wastewater Division. Whereas, said truck is available for state bid number T191 from Stuygers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, at a cost not to exceed $29,859. And whereas, this is a budgeted expense for the Public Works Wastewater Division. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that funds in an amount not to exceed $29,859 for the purchase of said truck, are hereby authorized and approved and paid to Stuygers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. And said funds are approved and appropriated for FY 2021, budget line item, wastewater and across on Capital Area. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor for this resolution, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. This concludes our time on the table tonight. The council welcomes any comments from persons present. If you would, please, Melissa, raise your hand and sign. If you would, come on and just register with Melissa. Just warm on if you would, and keep your business at your safe word. And thank you for being patient. Yes, sir. Do you wish to say your name, Madam Clerk? Do you have three?
My name is Elise Vander. Address 703 Buena Vista Loop. Actually, recently moved back about a month ago after an absence of about eight years from Prattville. Prior to that, we lived in Prattville for about eight, nine years. And ministry took me to different places, including back home to South Africa where I'm originally from. Coming back to Prattville has been very exciting for my family. We're excited to come back to a place where we own a home, where we love the community, where we have deep rooted friendships. However, I was absolutely shocked to see what has happened online in this wonderful community because of school. I will just say this. I trust that the representatives that represent me will make the right choice. However, I want to speak from personal experience, and that is that oftentimes, in a town like this, and I love this town, with people that's here for generations and generations, it's very easy to forget that there's more to the world than what we see in front of us. I've lived in multiple places, and I've experienced multiple school systems. Secondary, because my schools are homes, my kids are homeschool, because of personal choice. I come from a country where school choice, even though it's a public school system, and you have to pay to go to public school, there's school choice. I can tell you, and I can testify from personal experience, choice is not a bad thing. I understand that funds are tight, and I want to applaud both the gentlemen making their case. My hope is that, as this is being resolved, whatever way this is going to go, people that are opposing views will remain friends, will become friends, and will work together. I would love to see people shaking their heads while comments are being made, whether it's because of facts or disinformation, can go from a no to a yes in the near future. Ultimately, I just want to say, as a homeschool parent, I don't have much of a choice. My kids don't care much for what a typical school environment offers, and that's okay. My choice in the end is my choice to... But it's about the school. I wish I can get a fraction of the money that goes to a public school child being educated. As a parent of a homeschooler, I get no help. And I'm okay with that. It's my choice, and I can see the results of my choice. Ultimately, I just want to say, for everyone in the audience and the council, my hope is that the conversations will continue, that facts will rule out fables and fear, and then in the end, we'll come to a resolution that's going to be beneficial for all kids involved in our city and in our county. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sir, any council that you have any questions, may thank you, welcome your right hand.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Hi, John Lane Finnegan 211, Dear Trace. I listened with interest at the presentations by the BOE and Ivy. I only have a few comments, and these are only my opinion regarding them. I firmly believe that children should have the best education possible. When my former husband and I moved here 31 years ago without children, I could not believe how little we paid in taxes. I have always said that I would be more than willing to pay more taxes to help with education, as I feel our school system is woefully underfunded. The idea of a charter school is not wrong. How it is financed is. As everyone is aware, the city is considering a $22.8 million bond for the purpose in renovations of High Point Town Center, Town Center buildings for the charter school. The city has already paid close to $20 million for this portion of the long-term debt of the bonds approved in 2005. Granted, this long-term debt is supposedly to be paid off this summer, yet we are now going to replace it with another debt? Mr. Oakley just stated in his report, the total debt remaining as of $331 is $52,446,334.65. We don't know if other debts are coming. At that same finance committee meeting mentioned earlier, the mayor stated that there were two economic development projects that potentially would need assistance, and these entities have asked this information be kept pri- have asked this information to be kept private, so therefore executive sessions will be needed. This is just an example of possible future debts. I do understand that children's education is so important, but we are talking about a tremendous amount of money for the education of so few. If I understand correctly, the twenty-two eight point eight million is just to purchase the buildings and make renovations, not for yearly running of the school, which is, I believe, and I can't remember the amount, I have five million, I think it was more than that, and that additional monies would also be allotted from the city for this. Whatever the cost, Ivy and the city need to be completely transparent. For example, when looking through Ivy's application, I and others could not open any of the attachments, some of which deal directly with finances. Before any action is taken, all meetings on this matter should now be public. No more executive session should be held behind closed doors. Details should be readily and easily available, and full citizen involvement must be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question for the council? Yes, sir. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Al White the second, and I live at six twenty-one West Fourth Street, District One. I'm also a milit, a retired military officer, field grade officer. Twenty-five years, eleven months, seven days. I went to school at Billingsley High School. So education is of the utmost, talking to someone who also pursuing a doctor degree. You know, the gentleman that came up here and talked about Ivy's school, he said a lot of words, but he showed no action. One, he didn't bring a mission statement or a vision. In order to succeed in anything, you have to have a mission statement and a vision. He didn't bring that before you, or before the, uh, people, the very people that he asking money for. You know, you talk about fair equity. How are we to assume that it's going to be fair equity in those schools when they choose? You talk about school choice. How is that going to be school choice when you got certain people that can't even afford to go to the public schools that they go, they go to for transportation? Last year, the Board of Education, Spence A.G., made a decision to open the school, said that the students had a choice. They either going to do, uh, in school, or they going to do, uh, a high-bread. I mean, he didn't say a high-bread, he said either mixed school or online. If you know your constituents and the people you serve, tell me how many internets is out there in Joffrey Community? How many internets is in Vida? How many internets is in, uh, Shiloh? Reason why I ask that question, because I grew up in, in Joffrey, but I live here now due to my military, uh, compensation and my military, um, disabilities. How is that equal? How is that a choice? When they opened this school up, how is it going to be a choice when they can't afford the transportation to go to the schools? We have to be very, very aware of what we, what we, what we agree to, especially when you spending taxpayer money. And I know me and my wife spend quite a few in taxpayers' money. We owe back every year. Did they, did he, did he announce that most of the school, uh, that fifteen percent of the schools, charter schools start off and they close within the five years? Did you know that? Fifteen percent of charter schools start, they, they don't have the, the funding, and they close within five years. So how are they going to continue? Or if you go with Google, Google is the best friend. You can check that. I can tell by body language, I'm a effective communicator, I learned in, in military schools. So with that being said, we have to watch what's being said. He said that he didn't come up here and ask for twenty-eight point eight million dollars, but yet you asking for a bond. What, that sounds like asking versus mentioning.
Sir, I'll have to take you off. Excuse me for a minute.
Thank you, but I, I do ask that you think highly before you waste the taxpayers' money into a school that may not succeed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Counselor, do you have any questions? Is there any other one else that would like to make a question?
Got to adjust this, they've all been pretty tall, I guess. Can y'all hear me okay? All right, my name's Eden Arsenal, I live in, uh, fifty-seven, uh, eleven fifty-seven Perry del Loop. I want to begin as an employee of the Otaka County School System, but even before that, I was, I'm a graduate of the Otaka County School System and very proud of that. And I know in my opinion, like, I have no problem with a charter school coming here. Come, relax, it's, it's another business. But that's what it is, it's a corporation. And you'll never see the word corporation behind my school or behind any other school in Otaka County. Because that's not what it is. Um, I agree with the gentleman.